Okay, all right, I called the Village of Ryanbeck Planning Board for May 7, 2024 to order. First item on the agenda is Old Business, which is 33 Beet Street. An request to an amendment to previously approved conditional site plan. Changes to the siding. And, uh... Period, okay.
I'm here.
So we got some pictures, which I think Jeff has.
What would you like me to bring up first?
33 Beet Street.
No, which, which one is it?
Uh, there was, there was photos of just the exterior that, well, actually it's interior and exterior. It's just showing the condition of the current siding.
Okay.
Yes.
I don't really think it's like worth salvaging. And the clients are kind of in the same boat. They really want to just think... Number one is like, there's a lot of splits and cracks in siding. It's got like, when you look close up at it, there's like a lot of layers of paint that would have to come off to get down to that original siding. So I think we end up pulling a lot of it and replacing it with teeter, and I guess, you know, kind of would defeat the purpose of it. And one of the big things for me that I'd like to see is like, I want the siding to come off and I want to put sheeting up. Because right now you can see it's just siding over the, over the studs. One bonus is, I got them to do this color that I think everybody will like, I hope. Yeah, so, this is my, this is my big piece offering. If you'll let me pull that siding off.
You already said that you got them to do it.
Yeah.
Gave it away too soon.
Uh, they, uh, they really wanted, so we had like, in, in our proposal, we had gray in there. So they're looking at all this stuff and they stand to ask, um, iron gray, or dark. And I was like, I don't really want to go down this road. I was like, is there anything else you guys like? Uh, I forget the next one, not being with white, not, not being with red.
But that's a good idea.
Something like that, but it was dark.
Yeah.
And, you know, I mentioned this one because I do kind of like this warmer color rather than just like a sterile gray. And they went with it.
But the windows are black.
The windows are black. That's kind of why I just have this black line here to kind of detail that.
Looks good to me.
Yeah, I like that, I think it's gonna look good.
Is that the trim color or is that just a wood?
No, trim will be black, yeah.
So did everybody get a chance to look at the, uh, close-ups of the siding?
Yep, it's down the street, I see it every morning. You know, my feeling is it is, it's, the information hasn't changed. You know, um, you replace like three or four of the boards over the porch.
Over the porch, we did replace some just so we could flash it properly.
Right.
But some, there's more that would have to come off, that just have like splits in them.
Yeah, I mean, but that's, you know, like, like the house, the house just up the street, um, East Market Street, they replaced some of the boards and some of them they kept it. At least it gives it a feel that this isn't a brand-new house, it's an old house. I don't see how we can say we're restoring the house when you're changing every significant thing about it that has been changed. Um, that's, that's my feeling and, you know, the, the, you just put in insulation, it looks like.
Yes.
On that wall. So you've already sealed that wall up as, you know, much better than it was, obviously.
Oh, it's significantly better than that.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm not sure that the extra layer of sheeting is an absolute necessity, that's my feeling. Uh, it's the only thing left of that house that isn't new or post-1979.
What is the insulation, is it spray foam or?
It is, yeah.
So then how do you deal with, if you pull the siding, aren't you gonna have?
So it's all closed cell, so it does make it a little bit more rigid. And we put, we stapled tieback in there, like very carefully, went in like one inch, stapled the tieback to hold it all back. So I'm pretty confident that that insulation is for, you know, attached to the studs at this point. And I can carefully pull that siding off without disturbing the insulation. So that's our goal.
But wouldn't you create some air voids where you don't want them, on the back plane of the, the new sheeting or the old siding? You know, the old siding probably not, but the new sheeting? So the tieback would have stopped the spray foam and you're creating sort of a cavity for condensation to happen. Right, so almost removing the siding might, might hurt the building a little, a little more than it might have been at this point.
I don't think so.
No.
I mean, we got, when we put, the tieback was like a pain in the ass to put in, we did it like very, very neatly, so it's just like an inch in on the stud from the exterior. So you still have like three inches of that framing for the insulation grab. And we had it, you know, pretty tight, so that, we're trying, the goal was when this siding comes off, you're looking at like a flat surface. So that's, that's what we tried to do.
Got it.
Um, yeah, kind of with this law in mind.
This discussion is only about the front of the building?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that's the only original siding at this point, right, is the front?
Um, yes, everything else has been stripped off. I mean, when that siding dates due, I have no idea.
Yeah, it's hard to tell.
Yeah.
But I would just like...
That was installed in 1975 or?
It has some age on it though.
I don't know, yeah.
Yeah.
I would say by looking at that siding and the studs, that to me looks original, which would put it whenever the house was, 1880s, 1890s, or... And, but everything else is gone and the house looks like it was rehabbed 1970. And at that point, any historical look was muddled from whatever they were using, you know, between aluminum, vinyl, you know, um... I, I actually like this, I like the color and I was, you know, when we had our pre-meeting the other day, I said, I can go either way on this. And it was like, it was mentioned that, you know, I want to go with a darker color. And I'm like, that's my line in the sand.
Yeah.
So that to me, since nothing else is, is left, you've already gutted the house, you, you know, there's, there's really nothing to it. And I think by leaving a couple dozen original boards with a crack in it here and there, it's like, I, I...
That's kind of where they stand, they're like, why are we doing 99% of this house?
I don't have a problem with that, you know, the color is my, if you keep that color good, if, if you try to do, you know, I call it the Pantone color of the year or the Benjamin Moore color of the year, I remember, you know, everybody was painting their interiors of their rooms red like Versailles or, you know, and it's like, that's just, that's a timeless color.
Yeah.
And it's clean and smooth.
That's kind of how I sold them on it and I also, I think they're thinking too, like, all right, well, maybe this is like a good bargaining chip with you guys, I don't know.
That's how you feel about it.
You know, but they, they just feel like we're doing 99% of the house. They really want to see that siding come off, new sheeting go on, take the seams, you know, the way the rest of the house is gonna be. And I don't blame them because they're investing a lot of money into it.
And the, I don't know if we went through this last time, the trim around, the perimeter trim around the windows will be what?
That's all gonna be hardening material also. But it's gonna mimic the, the original layout, so it'll have the exact same sill profile, the same, the same, uh, that's in like the original proposal. I think there's photos in our plans that show the original with a mock-up of what it's gonna look like. So it'll be identical profile and layout as the original. It's just new material.
And you've already got the windows too over here, will there be shutters?
No, no shutters.
Okay. Anything else happening with the porch?
The porch, the, yeah, the, the railings are getting rebuilt, but they're basically gonna be the same. And we're redoing the columns so that they're gonna have like that raised panel up there.
And you're putting a capital on a base on it, right?
Um...
I thought I remembered, but I...
I think so, whatever's in our plans, which I don't have at the moment, but...
I think there was.
It was like a precedent on the street and they had given us.
Yeah.
Just on the base John here or, or on the top of the columns?
Uh, my memory was a base and a column.
Yeah, and that's like a raised panel at the bottom that the railings tie into and then it goes back like six by six and then it has the top piece.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure that was part of the 13 conditions of approval.
Yeah, yeah, that was in there. And there's a, there's a draw, there's a drawing in our plans.
Well, I kind of agree with Michael that, um, we're doing a lot to this building, took this, there's not much left of it. And the intermix of brand-new with the old cracked ones, I don't, I don't know what that achieves.
Have you seen the one on East Market Street that, um...
Which one?
Um... It's past, the white one that was completely rebuilt.
Right.
You know, they redone that and they matched the new siding to the old siding. So you see some siding has, you know, signs of age on it, you can see where it was painted before and everything, and other ones are new. And it mixes in, you put a color on it and at least you can say, oh, that's an old building, that's not something that was just plunked out.
Because the, the reveal on the siding is what would have been an old, narrower reveal?
Well, they matched the old reveal.
And how about this one then, if you're putting?
This is gonna, this has a five-inch reveal on it now and that's what it's going to have.
Okay.
Oh, we have to take, oh, I, I don't know. Darren asked some questions, but didn't say.
No, I'm, I'm pretty agnostic to it, I, I think I could go in either direction. And I think, you know, we put 13 conditions on this last time and you guys have complied with them. Um, you know, back, back to that past meeting, I would like to see different windows, but I understand the logic and where we are today. That should sell, and I think the siding for me, I think it's gonna look good both ways.
We did scale those windows down inside the house.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, I took my, your recommendation to them and they kind of got it just on a design principle and they were like, yeah, it's...
That doesn't matter and then?
Yeah, it looks nice.
Pushing away from the, the dark gray colors, I think helps a lot.
Yeah.
So I think we've gotten a lot in the right direction here. And, you know, I understand the practicality of it too, having replaced a lot of that siding. I know what happens when you try to pull a board from underneath the board, the one above it cracks and it's, it's difficult. I appreciate John's point a lot, but, you know, I think you guys are coming in our direction a lot here too.
Well, I guess the easiest thing to do is to make a motion to approve the amendment to the site plan and, uh, vote on it. You wanna make a motion? I'll make that motion with the condition that that color is what's...
This will be it. This is getting, this is getting ordered tomorrow.
Order it, yeah. Mike, the conditional approval is gonna get an asterisk or an amendment, that's gonna have to be re-signed by David before they can even start to do anything, so.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Don't second that and it's in compliance with all the 13 other.
Yes.
Conditions we have.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, John opposed, a four to one, it passes. Well, look, and we really do appreciate the work that you've done, the money you're spending on this house. To at least preserve it as best you can.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's gonna be awesome and I appreciate what you guys are trying to do here and I appreciate your suggestions too Darren. Because I think you mentioned something like this from the get-go. And, yeah, and, and I'm kind of excited to give it to you. Because everything nowadays is just black and white and sterile and I think this is gonna be really cool.
You moved away from a trend sometimes.
Yeah, yeah.
It's trending down even.
Yeah, so I think this is gonna be very nice.
Nice.
Not even black and white, it's black and black.
Yeah, yeah.
Two shades.
Yeah, a lot, a lot of it.
A lot of covered with black houses, isn't it? All right, so Ryan, work on that and let me know when I come and sign.
Tony, we'll get the conditional approval amended.
Okay.
Um, and then I'll have the chair sign that.
Okay.
Um, so you can start ordering things, just don't do it.
I won't necessarily pull anything, my, my concern is I just wanted to order this like tomorrow.
I think.
So that one likes this. I'm ordering, all right, cool.
If you can send me that, that color?
Yes, yeah, I will.
Thank you.
All right, cool. All right, that's it? Thank you very much, guys, I appreciate it, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is New Business 15 East Market Street, new signage for, uh, Westerland, is that the name of the sign, the business?
That's the name of the business, John, how are you?
Sir, your, your name for the minutes?
My name is Stephen Hardy from the Westerland Company, I'm replacing Andrea Westerland, our CEO, who could not make it tonight, she apologizes for that.
How do you spell Hardy, I'm sorry?
H-T-R-D-Y.
H-T-R-D-Y.
Yes.
Thank you.
And also I'm here regarding a site plan for the property on 15 East Market Street. Uh, we have at least agreement with Mr. Burton Cassu, I'm not sure if he's here tonight.
He's not here.
He's not here, is any other of the owners here? Oh, so you're there, so one of the owners is, is here. And our objective is to open our sixth store in that building, a clothing store, we have a, a line of, of loading stores across the... But before we can open, we would like the permission to make some basic renovations inside for about $25,000. Uh, the renovations would include, um... Removing the carpet, removing the drop ceiling, removing the slat walls, install truck lights, paint exterior wa, uh, uh, paint exterior white, paint interior walls white, remove non-bearing walls under stairs by entrance.
This is a comic book store.
It's, it's, no, it's a clothing store.
No, no, I mean, it was a comic book store.
Was it a comic book store?
Totally, no.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm not familiar with it.
That's a very long deep store.
Yeah, yeah, we, we like big deep store, we have a big stock of clothing, so that's, that's good. So that's the essence of why I'm here tonight.
It says here, remove and replace facade siding. Is that part of the program?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Right, well, um, that's something that I think would be a great asset for the village, because right now it's vital, really pretty awful.
If it's on the plan, I mean, I had just a summary by the CEO, if it's on the plan, it's...
All right, well, we'd have to know what's gonna be the replacement, but, um, before we get adopted. But yeah, I, I would encourage the siding to be...
Okay, so you want to know what would be the replacement for what, I'm sorry?
The front of the building is sited in, in vital.
Yeah, oh, oh.
And it's, this is in the historic district, so we would prefer to have it either wood or, um, fiber cement clappered siding to replace it.
Okay.
I mean, that's number one on there, so somebody's put it down, but we don't have anything on that.
Yeah, we'd have to see what it is, what color it is, what, you know, materials.
Would the board be comfortable in, um, either Ken or Justin or both signing off the facade material that's, that's proposed?
Um, well, I think we could say, we could approve something and say we would, if it's gonna be replaced in these, one of these two materials, um, in a color that's not black, pull back.
What color would you prefer?
We don't, we don't pick colors, but, um, hopefully a good taste.
In, in the code, you can't do Deon or, you know.
Fluorescent.
Stripes and polka dots, um, no fluorescent colors, those sorts of things. But a lot of people have been doing black lately and it's really not a historic color for siding, so we would prefer that. But there's nothing in the code that prevents it.
Jeff, he had mentioned it.
How much of the front is clappered?
You mentioned white, white.
Yeah.
What's on the front?
There's two different kinds of vinyl siding on the front.
Yeah, okay, just like under the windows?
Uh, all the way up.
All the way up? Uh, the only thing I would add to John's statement is, um, if you use wood or fiber cement clappered, we prefer it to be smooth, not simulated wood grain.
Okay. Yeah, the, the fiber cement comes in either smooth, painted smooth, or it has like a fake grain on it. And then it just looks like vinyl again, so. So we like it smooth, which is what clappered looks like.
Will do, will do.
So we could do a, um, a motion to say we, you know, and match the same sort of, um, width of, of siding as there, roughly. There's also, um, shutters on that building that are not...
They're vinyl or plastic.
Yeah, they, they look like plastic shutters. So to me, those should just come off. Um, have anything to say there?
Well, you have Ken and Justin have been sending us referrals lately, asking us questions. Maybe we can put this down as a referral to them.
Yeah.
As long as they, you know, follow the rules about, uh, smooth fiber cement or, uh, uh, clappers.
And there is something in the historic district.
No vinyl.
That says, "Any shutter shall match the size of the window openings and appear functional."
Right.
And the ones there are just slapped up against the side, they don't appear functional.
Sometimes you have a window this big and then they have a little shutter on its side. To look real, if the window's three feet wide, the shutter should be a foot and a half, a foot and a half, so it looks like you could close them. And then it, they would look real, but, uh...
So I think...
I can share that section of code with, um, the new tag.
So the preference would be either fiber, fiber cement siding or wood siding painted, um, the same sort of width as what's up there now, or, more or less. And no shutters, unless you're willing to put in wood shutters on actual hardware.
Would we be, I've been to a lot of the Westerland stores, I've seen them and it's a pretty strong aesthetic, you know, they're all different, they all fit the neighborhoods they're in. There's one in Hudson, there's one in Kingston.
Okay.
Um, so I worry that we might just be limiting some of the art creativity by saying, you have to replace what's there today with a better version of what's there today. So I'd almost rather see it written that, you know, Ken and Justin could approve this if it's a replacement with better materials of what's there today painted white. But if it was something else, we'd be open to consider it if there's some sort of historic precedent for it, because...
Could you comparatively, their store in Millerton?
I can't remember the store in Millerton, that looks outside, I feel like it's great.
It's a Stapper's store.
I was just there a week ago.
Right, it's great though, right?
I think it's brick on the sides, on the three sides, but I don't think it's brick on the front.
Right, and I think that's my point, is that they may actually have a better idea, something they might like better. Yeah, so they would say, let's leave the door open, if you want to come back and propose something that fits the historic nature of the village, we would be open to that too. But you don't have to come back, John's point, if you're gonna just do a better version of what's there today. I think that's what we're trying to do.
There is in the code a list of acceptable materials, so.
Jessica, share that with them.
We can share that with them, it's just there's a little bit of a time constraint, um, because they have workmen and contractors trying to be lined up um, with this other work they want to do on the inside.
Okay.
And that hasn't moved forward because of coming in front of you guys.
But if I may add also, I mean, style and beauty are our business, so we can totally do something that is creative, nice, and respecting the historical nature and all the codes, no related...
Well, we can have zone of... I think that's my point, I'm curious to see what you, you might give us if we don't steer you too hard towards it.
If they want to come back, that's, that's an option.
It's your option.
Was there a sign, it was a sign as part of it?
That's, we're separated with you.
But exterior facade and interior work are two different things in sign, right? So exterior facade doesn't have to hold up the other parts of the project necessarily.
But yeah, they could go through with their proposal if they get something adopted tonight. And then if they want to switch to brick or some other material that's in the code, they could come back and amend that, the siding material.
Right, I just didn't want you to feel that you had to go replace what's there today if you have a different idea in mind.
The inside would be, we could approve that and, um, the sign we're gonna do, are waiting on the sign?
No, we're not, we have the sign.
We have the sign.
But that'd be a second motion, we need this first motion. Does the board have any more questions about number of employees, hours of operation, any, anything about that?
So the, the, there's no change in the use of this property?
It's retail, it was retail before.
Right, and the, um, I forget, are the required parking spaces linked to the number of employees that will be in the store?
Yeah, square footage, so the square footage would be the same.
So then I assume whatever allocated parking was already for the prior tenant will be allocated to this business?
Yeah, actually, we can do with that, yeah.
And, and you won't have a public bathroom in this?
No, we, we won't be crossing our warehouse into business.
Okay, thank you.
Well, because it's a historic district, I have no problems with two through five. I would prefer to see, number one, before I say, yeah, this is good, so that's kind of where I'm, I'm going. I don't, I don't like to say, oh, make it nice and then go away and we're good with that.
So Mike, you wouldn't feel comfortable with Justin and Ken, um, if it's not better?
No, because I think...
Yeah, they're not the planning board.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
So we could approve the two through five, the interior construction and then come back with a, what you'd like to find the building to look like. We meet in two weeks on the 21st, we'll be first on the agenda.
Yeah, I think that, that would work.
So, so, you know, you could start construction on the inside, the inside's fine, there's a staircase, you understand the public can't go downstairs. There's no, two means of egress, I don't believe there are. Employees can go downstairs, but downstairs can't be open to the public.
I, I don't think the plan was to be open to the public, mine was a one-story store.
Okay.
Yeah. So it would be at the warehouse and our back offices downstairs, only if you...
So if we could make the motion to approve the interior redesign of 15 East Market Street, um, and then hold over the exterior to the next meeting.
Okay.
Um, and then we can move on to the sign.
All right, so who wants to bring that all together and go motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve number two through five on that list. The interior changes are acceptable. And we'll hold over the, uh, the decision on the siding or, uh, the front of the building until the next meeting.
Okay. I'll second that. Who's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now the sign is the second item, where is the sign?
Okay, let's go back. Stairs, tenet. Seven and a half feet available. Because what, this is what, is this what the old business was using? And you're taking it over or?
Yeah, seven.
Okay, so one, two and a half by three-foot sign to look like this.
Okay. What is that, that's your logo?
No, yeah, it's a bear and a fox.
Cool together.
Yeah, 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 family history, uh...
We've had some wild signs against you, this is not one, it's a little odd, but it's not as wild as the ones we...
So, let me, let's start again, this says two and a half by three feet for seven and a half, but when we look at the drawing, it's one and a half by four feet. So what, which is it?
I mean, it's gonna be less than the comic book last...
Could you mind showing the one above the previous one?
Seven point five square feet.
Yeah, the proposed is two and a half by three. Is there, are you only proposing the hanging sign, no signs for the windows?
Yeah, just the hanging sign.
Okay, and the hanging sign is steel, one and a half by four feet? Okay, so that's something less than the six square feet. Less than the, well, a little...
At one square foot left.
One and a half. Uh, it would be, yeah, yeah, and it will not be illuminated, no illumination.
No.
That pole is there, or you have to renew? The pole on all the signs on the building or you have to get a new one?
I can't, I'm not sure.
The pole is there, the pole's there?
The pole and bracket is there, chair from, uh, the comic book signs.
Okay.
Okay, and the bottom portion of this sign must be a minimum distance above the pavement?
Seven feet, yeah. Yeah, yeah, we predict people's head, yeah.
And, uh, and so what, this is just, this is just a kind of a steel with the Westerland removed? Or is that painted on, but what, is this a color, will this be painted?
I think it's gonna be just in steel.
In steel?
Yeah.
I don't think he's understanding the question.
Are the letters hollowed out?
I, no, Frankie, I don't. Okay, I don't, I don't, I realize that she should...
Either way, I think we're gonna approve it.
Either way, we, yeah, all right. Can we have a motion to approve the fox bear?
We said bear fox, but it's...
Bear fox, okay, yeah.
I would make that motion with the, if I could just ask you to correct the application for the writing.
Okay. Because it says on two point five and then the picture says one point five.
One point five by four, yeah.
Which leaves you an extra foot if you wanted to, you know, put a logo on the door or something later on, you'd have an extra foot.
Yeah.
But change that to one point five so that you know you can use it for your signage.
I'll second the motion.
Who's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we ask that, uh, once the sign is up, take a picture and give it to Ryan?
Sure.
We'll do that.
And Ryan, you're gonna send them that code section about?
Yes.
The acceptable facade, you have the facade material.
I appreciate it, gentlemen, thank you.
Yeah.
You, thank you.
One sign we wore, no sandwich board signs. No sandwich board signs, you know, the ones that are out on the sidewalk?
Yeah.
That's not permitted.
Okay, then we won't move to that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a, uh... Okay, we have a, this is a. Next item on the agenda is 47 and 49 North Parsons Street. Subdiv, a minor subdivision giving split fee for one property to the property that's in the historic district.
We sit here?
Yes, please, thank you.
So this is right behind the law office on 47. North Parsons Street is a, is a building, on the street is a building way back, behind the driveway. Along driveway. So what are you giving away to whom?
What are you giving away to whom?
Is this before or after?
I don't. That's both.
Yeah, the new one is the angled one, and the, and the old one is the more fox-style one.
Yeah, the one that goes further east.
The building that has a, that's closer to the road has an area of 10,000 square feet. And we want to reduce that to 8,000 and add the 2,000 to the other house, the bigger house.
Okay, so the dotted line is just.
That, that's the proposed line, the, the.
This is the.
This line is, that's the proposed, the other one is what's the actual line.
This is today, the bigger one, proposed.
You're taking from the little lot and giving it to the big lot.
Okay. There's a really big, like, looks like a copper beech or something like that tree there.
What's that?
There's a big tree along that property line, and I was wondering where that is on the, on the plan.
There's two. Okay, there's one close to the house.
It's a red maker, there's two red makers.
There's, there's one just about here.
Yes.
Where is that in relation to the line? I don't want the line to go through the middle of the tree and then we have.
No, it doesn't, it does not go, it's, it's eight feet or so, or nine feet from, from the line.
So whose lot is it on? The big house?
It's on the small house.
On the small house?
Yeah, both, both trees are.
So Jordan, for the public hearing, if you can include that on the plan?
Got it.
That would be helpful, yep, to the board?
Yeah, we just don't want a tree, right? You know, nobody has responsibility for it.
Okay. And, just following up on the last time we spoke about this, this, the result of the lot line change would not put the smaller house lot out of code, in other words, it would still be a minimum 8,000 square feet remaining, and the septic system for this house would still be compliant.
And the lot coverage would be all right?
Well, I had a question about that, because you showed 32.22% coverage on the small lot now, which is within a 30% limitation.
You can only cover a certain percent, what is it, 30% I think? And so now, the lots become smaller, and that's a big house. Is, is, what, does it meet the code?
30%.
I think you, that was why I wanted to ask the question, because you might be calculating it, factoring things that don't count into coverage in this total.
It's just building.
Just structure.
Oh, okay.
The driveways and the, and even ground under patios or anything like that.
Okay.
But buildings and decks, anything sort of built up from the ground counts for that coverage.
Okay.
Yeah, was my sense, is that you just had too much in there?
Right, we did.
Like, you show it right now, not complying, so you need a variance if, if that were to be the case.
Okay.
Lot line would need to be adjusted slightly.
Got it.
So correct that on the plan.
Will do.
So if you do the calculation, I think you're coming just under.
Yep.
It would be nice also if you know where the septic system is.
We do.
Mark it on the plans?
Yeah, that's, that little circle off the corner of the house, there it is.
Okay, it's just a cesspool on.
Yeah, and the.
Big one too, is it?
No, there's more, if you want to see the leash lines on that one, we can draw them on there.
Well, I was more concerned about the little lot, because that's the one where it's gonna be constricted.
Yeah.
The big lot, I'm sure, is in the backyard somewhere.
It's in the backyard, I have the plans from the health department.
As long as it's not anywhere near the lot.
Nowhere near the lot line.
I don't think we need to worry too much about that.
Although they're revising, so, I mean, if you have it, probably just as good diligence on our part to show it there.
Okay.
Right?
Sure.
Because there's, in theory, it could be in the front yard.
Yeah, we, and we have it all exactly, so we can show it on there.
Hundred percent believe what you're saying, and just, you know, if you have it, it's that easy just to put the lines on.
Hundred percent.
Change anyway, it's good diligence on our part.
You got it.
That's called a one-story building, even though it's two stories, because the garage is on the street level?
Yeah, the first floor is concrete block, it's covered by vinyl siding, but the first floor is all concrete block, and it's just a boiler down there, and it just opens, it just opens space to garage, has a two-car door, 16-foot wide garage.
All the living space is on the second floor, which is why it's.
No living space at all on the first floor.
Okay. So we just have to have a public hearing at the next meeting?
That's up to the board.
Yes.
Yeah.
I have, I have a problem with this.
Some of it, I think, cut off.
We're required to have a public hearing for subdivision.
I don't think anyone's gonna be concerned about it, but we have to invite, you know, the neighbors, Mike? I don't know, I don't think, you can never predict, but probably not. There'll be number five, is there's a public anybody within, what is it, 500 feet?
No, that's the town chair, 200 feet.
200 feet.
500 feet.
200 feet.
Okay, that'll get to 21st, huh?
That's a couple of houses.
Is there anything we need to do procedurally in the village for public hearing notice?
No, that's all taken care of.
I think it's care of that.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Just come prepared with the updated.
We'll get an updated plan right back to you.
Yeah.
So you have three items to update, right? Show the trees, show the septic for the larger lot.
Yep.
And then check that coverage.
Yep.
Which probably affects all of your coverage calculations, are probably all way lower percentages than you should. Once you just factor in structure.
Yep, we'll do three items, yep. I just need a motion.
All right, I'll make a motion to have a public hearing. Well, 47, 49 North Parsons Street at the next meeting, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Who's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So lot coverage does not include uncovered porches, parapets, steps, and terraces. And driveways too.
Got it.
So it's structured.
Yep.
They have a roof on it.
Understood.
So I think you'll see, they'll come up, the little ones especially will come under 30% now.
Yep.
Because we can't look, you have to rethink it if it goes over 30.
Yeah, we'd take that corner, close to the street, just scooch it over just a little to the right probably to solve it, because we'd be down to decimals themselves. But I think, to your point, I think we'll be under.
Okay.
Yeah.
Think about more landscaping around that building. Do you own that building, or who owns the small one?
I own both, both properties.
Just seems like they're being right up on the, you know, it's not, it's not a contributing building to the historic district, but it's, you know, in proximity to it.
It was Connie Lloyd, he had some, did some violence and stuff, you know, and he had workers downstairs, and the upstairs freely is a, it's a, you know, demodulared house to put on top of the concrete block.
Yeah, it just seems like.
It's kind of nice inside, truthfully, I'm gonna move in there.
Oh, all right, well, you might want to do some landscaping around the front.
There is some in the front that I keep trimming.
Okay.
Quite, quite a bit, try to keep that, the bushes that are there in the, in the, in the front, the signs, not great.
Good, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
I mentioned, for the previous application, hey, recently, did we did the sidewalks there? Took out the asphalt and winning concrete sidewalks, looks so much better. And we appreciate that.
Thank you.
We're trying to purge the village center of asphalt sidewalks.
Thank you. It's happening fast, good. Have a good night.
Isabel.
I'm on. Isabel, I saw that, yeah.
Isabel is.
Separate, I'm sure they will. Wait for them to.
Has filed an application for a variance for mini splits on her property.
If you could, yeah, this is the whole front of the house.
Let me go down.
Okay, some of the, that's the second one, if you could show the first picture?
Okay, this here?
You know? Could you turn it?
Yep.
Ah.
Okay, we've got the document, and then here's the first picture.
So, this is what was called for decades, the new house, because it was built, the Peter Pults' house, the tavern was burned down in 1960, and Mr. Mitchell built this in 1975, and it was called the new house. The Peter Pults' tavern had two postcodes, 104, 102, and only 104 survived. And I say that because if you see the, above the white fence, you see the carport, and that is what remains of postcode 100. That was Mrs. Rosenkrantz's house, that was attached to 98. So if you see the brick house of 98, if you're coming into the village, you'll see that it, it's brick, there's no window, and that's because 100 was attached to that.
It's right up against the.
And therefore, that is the property line. And Mrs. Rosenkrantz's 100 was 16 feet wide, and Mr. Kilniardi, I think it was, after she died, he tore the, her house down because he wanted the driveway for the car. And so then Mr. Mitchell built the house, it's exactly eight feet and two inches, but the current owner put a picket fence attached to the carport, so I have only measured eight feet and one inch, or 97 inches. And I have two compressors on the west side, one is original to the house. Excuse me, having trouble talking. It was originally a single-family, central heating, central air. In 2006, I came before the planning board because I wanted to make it a two-family with an apartment upstairs, and I put in the second, you can't.
So, yeah, this is a photo I took.
Well, that's a new picture.
Yeah, I took, I took a few photos today, Isabel, so is this the fence you were mentioning?
So you see the picket fence, it's upside down picket, you know, the pickets are there. And those are the two compressors, which you can see from there.
I might, I might have.
I have a vinyl covering over the small one, which yeah, you can see, there's a, I'm going to change the wrought iron gate to a because it doesn't function anymore with the bigger ones, with a, a gate that closes it off.
It's not really a nice sideline.
Yeah.
In fact, you can't see it, it's gonna get.
That's the front, the second compressor for the upstairs was, I had a routine checkup three weeks ago, and JSP said, well, it's rusted, and it, it, there are flaws in the ducts, I, I've never, it's, it's, it's not a good setup. And JSP said, well, you can get a mini splitter, which would be solve a lot of problems.
So you're.
Turn that up, ah, you can't, you can't see that.
This is from the back, and this is the.
Now, this is from the, from the back.
Right, this is a view from the rear facing out towards Market Street.
But how come you can't see the, this?
Oh, he can scroll off, I think he's just, yeah, go the other way, Jeff, she's trying to show the compressor, the.
So Mr. Mitchell built the house with the living room.
I'll just try to see the unit herself.
We'll get it straight.
There you go. Okay, this unit?
Yes.
Yeah, if you could see the, the house. What you can't see, if you could see the house, the, the back.
You want me to go to the rear?
We had it, there it is.
This view, yeah.
So you see the, the sliding door, the den, and the living room, and you can see the existing compressor, and what you can't see, but you can see in this picture, JSP, the system designer, showed the lines.
That's the picture I'm showing.
You can't see it?
No, that's the picture we're showing here, the one you're holding up.
Yeah, I know, but you can't see the lines that he drew.
Oh, I see.
Of the.
Of the line, set down.
Of the heat pump. I don't think you can see that.
Is this a?
Maybe that only shows in the orig, that's, oh, this one, but in red.
Yeah, yeah.
If you look close, there's, there's a line drawn on it here, and a line drawn on it here.
Okay.
Well, you can see it in the original.
Oh, I see, this is like a black and white.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what it's red.
It's in red.
Right, right, okay.
He drew it on, he drew it on top of a photo of how it would be placed.
This is in the historic district, it's not on historic register.
Right.
We're here to talk about the fact that it's, it's, it would be within a setback.
It's a setback, so if you, it's, it's 16-inch wide, and it's, would stand on the slab, so it would extend 34 inches out from the house.
Jeff, could you show us the unit, just real quick? Thank you.
Yeah, that's the unit, and it stands on, on a stand, 18 inches out, and I drew underneath that.
So have you talked to your neighbor about this? Are they okay with it?
I haven't talked to her, no.
Is that, you know, this is a variance, and the person who is on the west side is probably the most affected by this.
Right.
Because it's gonna be well screened from the road, it's not a real big issue for us.
No.
But your neighbor might not want it so close to their house, that's the only option.
Well, Dorothy has, she's got a couple of.
I know, but I'm just saying, before you go to the zoning board, it would be a good idea to touch base with your neighbor and make sure they're okay with it.
Right.
I mean, the argument would be that this is probably better than the old unit, because it'll be much wider.
It is. It is.
It's smaller.
And it's well shielded by fences.
Two fences.
Yeah, so there's a barrier there, both from noise and, so, you know, I, I don't have a problem with this being a positive recommendation. And we'll just let the zoning board appeals decide.
I'll talk to Dorothy, I haven't thought of.
The red lines on it?
You know, she's never complained.
Just one question, John, the, the picture, the picture that has the red lines?
Yes.
Are they rising up the side of the house here, and the only request would be?
Oh, no, no, oh, no, we use, we use the, the same hide cover that exists.
Yeah.
That already exists, they're gonna change the, they don't like the quality of the covering.
But those lines won't, he just drew that for the, yeah.
What we, what we usually ask is that, just for appearances, especially if it might be reasonable to the neighbor, they just paint the covers the same color as the house, so they don't, you know, don't paint it bright red. Or, or luminous green.
Michael, I said that.
No, I think, I don't know, he had a pen and he just drew it.
Yeah.
So we make a positive recommendation, we have to have the findings for Tim, so.
What do you?
Well, I'll make a motion for a positive recommendation to the zoning board of appeals based on the fact that there are two fences separating the neighborhood that'll be well screened from the street, and that they're replacing existing ones that are already there, which probably be noisier than the replacement ones, the new ones.
And the building's not on the historic register.
The building's not on the historic register, it's not contributing building, so it's, it's only a variance question, not a historic district question.
Yes.
I don't know, that sounds like enough. We have, we have a second? I'll second it. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. This was, this house was the linchpin. This was, this house was the linchpin for the historic. I had long discussions with Marilyn Hatch at the time because New York State did not want to approve the historic, because this is 1975. And I forgot the exact wording, but it's something like "modern architecture for adaptive reuse" was, I wish I had, it's probably in the literature that she wrote.
But it's not, it's not, it's listed as a modern intrusion. It's not, it's not historic buildings, so they understand.
It is an historic form.
Yes.
But, you know, it's got a little bit of siding that they call it...
Like what, like a Dutch colonial?
Yeah, it has like a flared grumble roof on it.
Like this peak here, John?
I think, I think Mr. Mitchell wanted to continue President Roosevelt's idea of colonial. Because on East Market, as you know, we, the only... Well, Peter Pults' house is 97, so next to your house. That was where he lived. And that was built in 1795.
And he moved into my house.
Right. And I think that was Mitchell's idea.
Hey, I don't know what the original tack would look like.
I have pictures. My neighbor lived in it right after World War II.
Wanted to come down.
Thank you, Isabel.
All right, good luck at the ZBAs. Good luck at the ZBAs. And I would talk to your neighbor just to make sure this...
I shall do so, I shall do so.
Thank you, Isabel. Thank you.
Our item on the agenda is 86 East Market Street.
So a correction chair, that was a typo. It should be 86 Montgomery Street.
Oh, okay. 86 is one of the four sisters.
No, no, this is the hospital.
Yes, Kate Wong's house.
Yes, former.
Former house, Robert Wong's former house. Many people's former house.
So it's up to you guys, which one wants to come up and...
Yeah, I'll sit at the table so you can be in the camera.
All right.
So you want to...
Your name, sir?
I am Joseph Melkardt.
Joseph Melkardt.
He's the contractor.
Yes. Which, which one of these would you like to start with? Which of these documents?
Let's go, do you have the photos?
Okay.
It'll probably be the easiest one.
Project plan and photos?
Yeah. We can start with the, let's just, yeah, we start with the plan and that's right there. So the existing, this kind of shows the existing house. See where it says "open deck" over to the left?
Yeah.
Where it says "open deck", that is currently, well, they did a renovation in 2015 and they put like a porch on that entire, a roof over that entire deck. And on the backside, where you can see the darker color, yeah, right there, right, that whole area there, that is a porch. And currently, about one-third of the porch, that south third, was during this 2015 era renovation, was made part of the kitchen. So basically, is it easier if they come up just to, and they might be them. We'll go through this here. So this right here, again, this currently, 2015, they had a big deck. They put a roof over top of this. This right here was an original, like, screened-in porch. Then part of this renovation, they closed this off. So this is now part of the kitchen area, so part of the finished space. What they're looking to do with this round is to take this off because it blocks much of the light that's coming in. So they want to just remove this roof area here and then add this area to the existing finished space versus just having it as a screened-in porch. And really, that's, oh, and add a, right now, there's a condensing unit right here. And they're adding, they want to add one right next to it. That's right here. And if you go up to the next page, it'll show us just some views.
But this will also work to the deck as well, not just the closing?
So we're taking off. So right now, if we have the pictures that show it, like, right now, there's currently a roof that's over top of a large, yeah, right here. Yep, you just go up here.
And you're replacing the surface of the decking?
Yes, and the deck gets changed. With the decking, so it'll all match going through the trecks, the composite material. The railings that are currently here, we're going to match those throughout. So they'll all be the same railings that are shown there. So basically, this piece is coming off. And this already is kind of here, basically is going to be the same as what's here right now. Can you go up or down, but keep going this way? Yeah, perfect. So this, this is now going to be the view from the back again. Right now, from about here to here is, has a canopy, has a roof over top of it. So that's going to be removed. There's a shingle roof on it. This will be a metal roof to match this roof that's right here. And the railings, you know, add right up here. So those will be the same exact railings that are on here now. It'll just continue around. And this, these, these will not have grills in them for the sliding glass doors. She wants those to be open. And this, this window right now, currently here, does not have grills, but it will have grills. So the only thing, all the new windows, there's four new windows, one on the side here, here, there, and one on the other side. Those will have grills. These right here are going to just be, you know, double sliding glass doors that open out onto the back deck.
So the grills be exterior?
What's that?
Will the mountains in the windows, the dividers in the windows, will they be exterior?
Are those, I mean, are those clip-on?
Is or between the glass, but we can have them match the existing.
Yeah, but that's what's there now, between the glass.
Do you know what series Marvin it is? Is it ultimate or is it...
Ultimate.
Ultimate.
So they would have exterior?
No, 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 so they're between, so on the... Yeah, these are actually the windows here.
These, they're semi-hungover, right? So they have spacer bars and grills inside and outside?
Inside only.
Inside only.
Yeah.
I'll have to take a look, I don't recall. The ones that are there right now, because they did those replacement, those are between the, on all the rest of the house. So it's black with the...
So none of these replacement windows are on the front porch of the house? They're all in the back?
Well, what I'm saying is, the windows, at some point, were replaced fairly recently. I'm guessing with the 2015. And those were all done with black replacement windows with grills between the panes. That's what's on the house that's there now.
So any of these new replacement windows, are they going to be on the front porch of the house? Or are they all in the back?
No, just, there's just four windows. So if we have, maybe the survey, could we go, probably...
Yeah, there's no front elevation.
Just keep going down.
Down?
Yeah, actually, this would be, where we at? Here, yeah, so if we go up just a little, or you know, bring this down? Yeah, so this, the road that we have...
Montgomery.
It's this one.
Here's Montgomery.
Okay. So, right, so here we have, this is, so this is the road here. And this is where we're talking, right here.
Okay.
So, yeah, nothing up in, nothing visible from the front. And so, again, the condensing, there's a bump out that goes here. And that condensing is in the corner, like I said, right next to this existing one.
So this is relatively, everything you're doing is relatively invisible.
Absolutely, but also a precedent. So if you're continuing, the track stacking is matching what's there. The railings match what's there. The windows are more of what's already there, except for the ones without any kind of divisions in the house.
Right, and in the back right now, they don't have any divisions in them currently. The door and the windows. If we go, if we go to the, yeah, the pictures, just keep going. So, well, actually, I'm sorry. This is just, again, the idea of this is all, you know, this whole roof system's coming off. This is part of the original foundation that's here. That, this is staying. It's just being now part of the interior space.
And that's what's staying? You're going to put a metal roof on to match the other?
Correct, yep. Metal roof goes on the top. And then there'll be one window that's going right here. That'll mirror the other, so actually, you can see it right through there. So that's, okay.
And here's the, I guess that's just another view?
Yeah, that's kind of a closer up. There's the Bilko door that you see. And then that's, you know, the existing foundation.
Where did you say the new?
Keep going.
Yeah. Where'd you say the new heat pump will go?
Yep, you gotta keep going. There's a picture of it. We'll keep going down, we'll get there. All right, so here, just to unite it. So, again, window, right there's a glass door there. And heat pump, we'll have another picture. It's going right in the very corner, right there. Yep.
Like the last two.
Yeah, just keep going down, we should. Yeah, so this is just this side. So, again, window with no grills in it. And foundation that's here. Again, this is what, we're going to match this, take the roof off. Right, all the decking will continue throughout. Right now, it is a composite material, but we're just going to replace it. So it's all new and continue with all new search. Yep, thank you. I'm just showing the access into that little crawl space there. Another view.
I don't remember seeing the heat pump in the photos.
Maybe it's in the other PDF.
Okay.
Yeah, that was a separate email.
Go back to here, here we go. Which one has that?
Maybe the heat, no, it's...
No, the second one from the top.
Scroll through. Looks like a lot of what we've just seen.
Yeah, you saw.
So right under those stairs.
Yeah, Joe explained it in plan.
On the south side.
Yeah, it's behind that is going to be behind those stairs up against the house. Protrusion on the house, so it's well hidden from the street and the driveway.
Yeah, there's no...
Yeah, actually, go back to the plan view for a second. You can see the protrusion pretty well. Because we're talking about, I lost, yeah, this is, this is sticking out. And then here?
It's underneath that, underneath the stairway.
So we have right in the very corner.
One more there. But it's blocked from the road by this addition, plus the stairs. And the front of that house isn't even on Montgomery. Remember, Montgomery curves in.
It's an odd spot.
It's kind of a little half, little...
How does the driveway work? Because you have one driveway that's, you know, it fronts on to...
Montgomery Street is existing.
And the other one is right at the intersection of, you know, Mount Rutsen Road or whatever you want to call it.
Yes, so Kate Wong did that because one driveway serves the tenant that lives, I believe, upstairs. And then the other driveway, that kitty corner is off of the curb that goes in. And I believe Kate Wong put a horseshoe in there.
Yeah, it's just how do you get in there? Left hand turn into that spot, it just seems impossible.
Yeah, probably if you're, if you're going left off of Montgomery Street, you're pulling into the tenant's driveway, going through the horseshoe, and then going over.
It's very awkward, but I'm not sure there's any good fix.
So you know, existing.
It's already there, they get used to it.
There's the heat pump front of this, if you want to look at it. I don't have a problem with any of this.
Yeah.
Yeah. What about lines? So it's Joe, the additional heat pump, if they could be within the walls?
No, they're going to run on the outside. They will have line height to match the existing, unlike the ones that are there now.
On the outside, where though on the building?
So if you have the...
Out of sight or...
If you have the picture, yeah, send those back to Emily. So, this, the new location of the heat pump is really going to be, it's going to be right up here in the corner. So those will come down, you know, either inside or outside will kind of remain to be seen. And then it's just going to wrap right along the bandboard, right over behind it. And right now, the one that's there, just kind of has them loosely going around, they're coming up there. But ours will all be on line height, right along the bandboard.
So wherever is possible, we try to discourage line height. So if you can get these things in the walls, if you're opening into those walls...
Yeah, that would be just this one here.
We could come down, come into that wall and just get onto the bandboard.
Yep.
And you guys couldn't see it, but all out of sight, all sort of back of the house, not visible from the road. And it looks like the vertical run could all be done in the wall. And then the horizontal could be in the bandboard. Or possibly in the, in the Joyce, for really, really lucky.
Possible.
Ace for the pile.
Sure.
I think there are many copies of the same one, or maybe there's a few.
We just had a hard time with a lot of people just putting running lines straight up the building. And said, you could have run it along the ground and kind of up in the back of the building. Why'd you do that? Well, I don't know, the contractor just did it. You know, so we're asking people to, you know, it's your house and it's a historic building. Think of ways, if you're gutting the inside, certainly go in the building or whatever, the walls. If you're not, then try to do it. And if you have to come out and a little exposure, whatever color, the house is blue or green or yellow, paint the covers blue or greeny, or make them a little invisible. So we're trying, you know, we know there are like 70 or 80 houses now that have this may split. Or other kinds of heat pumps, and we try to keep them hidden from the view.
Yeah, 77.
77?
That was the number that somebody gave.
Somebody gave, 77. Well, the last two meetings, it's probably 80 by now. All right, so is everyone okay with this?
Yes.
Yep.
Yep.
You have a motion to approve the modification of 86 Montgomery Street?
I would make a motion and just add that as much of the line set would be concealed in interior walls as possible.
The lower end of the building. Paint it the same color, it's whatever it is, so it doesn't stand out.
I think it can actually...
I'll second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good luck.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
The next item on discussion is the summer schedule. And we want to pin down and publish our summer schedule. Because we may have a lot of stuff going on this summer. And we have a meeting first, we have...
You're going to take my bowling?
Yeah, no, I'm sorry about that.
Thank you so much.
We have two meetings in June.
Yes, June 4th, Chair, and June 18th.
Now, we're going to have one meeting in July and one meeting in August, as we usually do. And then Labor Day, whenever that meeting is, September something.
Correct.
July looks like the 16th is maybe better than the 2nd because it's further away from the holiday.
Yep.
Right?
All right, so for July, we're proposing the 3rd Tuesday, and that would be July 16th.
Okay, and August?
So just for reference, the 1st Tuesday is August 6th. And the 3rd Tuesday is August 20th, which is also the first day of the fair.
I am, right now, I plan to be away on the 3rd Thursday, August 20th.
Why don't we do the 6th?
Yeah, especially if it's the fair.
You don't want to mess with the fair.
I want to be here for the 6th. In fact, I won't be here pretty much all, you know, I'm here the second full week in August. The first, 3rd and 4th week I'm in May.
So you would...
That's okay, we got alternates.
So you won't be here for either of these?
Right.
Okay. Then if we do the 6th, we're likely to have a quorum.
I just want to make sure we have three people here.
Yeah.
I can make the 6th.
I'll be here.
I can make the 20th, both here.
Yeah, 6th is good.
August 6th.
So is the board comfortable voting tonight? Or do we want to vote next meeting?
No, we should get this done in writing our meeting schedules. And when is September, what's Labor Day or...
Uh, September 2nd, I believe, Chair.
We have a meeting the 3rd.
Excuse me, September 3rd. Excuse me, September 3rd.
Well, Labor Day is the 2nd, we have a meeting the 3rd, right?
Yes.
Meeting the 3rd, okay. So we get this, and then we can publish this to any applicants who are thinking of coming.
So I will be gone both meetings in June.
Mm-hmm. So we'll have four people.
Yeah, do have alternates, if you wanna call them in service.
I am waiting for a clarification from our attorney about alternates.
Okay.
He was, David was gonna check with Emily whether it's legitimate for us to have alternates on a one-meeting basis, perhaps. He thought we might have been doing that incorrectly. He was gonna get back to me, he hasn't got back to me yet.
We've done that before.
I know, I said, you know, we've done that before. That we've had it where if there was like, gonna be, say, a three-meeting event, and one person couldn't make a meeting for day one, then some alternate would sit in, and then we asked the alternate to be there for 2 and 3 to have some continuity. Except now we have Jeff's video, and people who are not there on day one could. You know.
Yeah.
I don't know.
So if it's gonna be a three-meeting event, you know, like approval process, and the alternate would be there for meeting one, they can also sit in for the other things on the agenda that are gonna be decided that night, and not vote on the one that's longer term.
I don't know, I'll call David again, he's gonna have Emily get back to me. Because it's important that we understand this, he thought what we were doing was not right. Because I had said that we don't have, for the hospital, for the Mirabu Spa, we managed to pull together three people for every meeting, and went on for six months a year. With the broken center coming up, which could go over some considerable amount of time, would it be, is it legal to have an alternate juror? Like, you know, a sixth person that would come to every meeting, and then if one was not there, he said, he didn't think that was allowed. That you just have to have a quorum. And we really should have, I said, could you have an alternate who would sit there? And John's on vacation for meeting one, and Darren's on vacation for meeting four, and I'm sick for meeting five, you know, could that person be an alternate juror and hear the case? And he said, no, it doesn't work. I'm gonna check with Emily, it doesn't work that way.
Yeah. Usually they sit, not, they don't, you know.
Right.
Observe for the audience, and then come up and vote the next meeting.
He said.
But I think that they can come and sit for one meeting if they so choose, if we wanna make sure we have a quorum, or if we wanna have a full board, they can come here, and they can vote on the things that are voted on that night, and they don't vote on the longer-term issue.
Well, David was sure he's gonna have Emily get back to me, to clarify it.
Okay.
Got it.
So before, I need a motion for this new summer schedule.
I'll make the motion.
Second, Jeff.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So publish the schedule, these are our dates. If you have some project coming along, make sure that you know these dates are available. We spread them out, so there's not.
That's pretty good there.
It's pretty good, like three weeks or something like that. I think the worst one is August, but we don't have a lot of, people don't come.
Fair.
For plans, people, and we don't have a lot of business in the summer, so I think the schedule is okay.
Famous last words.
Famous last words. Well, we seem to have even room for someone to be ill, or have an out-of-town emergency or something. It's not like three people.
Yeah.
Which is what we.
Easy to ask, good question. Could I ask a question? The first person brought a color of siding, and you spent a good deal of time discussing the color, which I heartily applaud. Now, eighty-six East Market recently painted of the Four Sisters, very dark color.
They said it's a dark blue, it's not black, it looks black to me.
It looks black.
We don't have.
Did you approve that?
House colors are not in the code.
Well, then why, what's the siding color?
They wanted, they thought about making it black, and we said, oh, we don't want another black house, so we said, we would, we bargained with them, even though it's not in the code.
We just said we would prefer.
We wanted a lighter color, they should not want to, you know, it would destroy what they were trying to do, and that's restore a historic building and make it black. So he worked with them, and we made it, we bargained a deal. You make it a lighter color, you know, we, you know.
No influence over.
Colors, no, we had the neon, on Mulberry Street with that day-glow neon house.
Yes.
For the longest time.
Oh, that one, oh.
And we have no, we have no control of.
Oh, actually, we put in the cover, no neon or fluorescent.
Yes, now you did.
After that.
After the model, yes, there was a model.
We don't have any say over whether.
And you don't have any say whether people paint at all, I know that.
If you watch this old house, you'll see, oh, we're here in Manchester, Vermont, or we're, you know, Boston or something, and the rule is, the Historic Commission has to approve the colors. It could be any one of these nine colors, but not the same color as the house that you decided you. We don't have that law. Colors were never put in the code, nobody wants.
I would suggest that you add that, if that's possible.
We don't make it.
Talk to her.
The Cochran's, Cochran's plan is recommending that the Village Adopt a Pattern book that would have things like that in it.
Paint swatches.
In theory.
In theory.
The World Joyce, or make sure you pull yourself up to the buffet table, announce moment.
So we don't have it, and maybe, maybe they'll come, recommend something which would help direct people, you know.
Love it.
I mean, I came from Park Slope Brooklyn, which was all brown, brownstones. If it wasn't painted, you couldn't paint it. And if it wasn't painted, you could paint it brown. So it's pretty simple, there was no rules. Someone painted it a pinkish-brown, didn't, everybody painted it, everybody hated it, and, but there was no law, no enforcement in Brooklyn.
Any other questions from the audience? Can we, can we move on to the 59 Chestnut document?
Guess so, I wasn't anticipating this to be.
Ryan sent out a suggestion, and Darren sent out corrections, suggestion. We haven't had Chester really, we just got it a few minutes ago. Aaron Chestnut, if you wanna make some corrections to Darren's corrections, we could do it on the 23rd.
I'll send an email, the only thing I thought about was, I thought we said, another thing to mention was that the applicant had letters of support from all three adjacent properties, which is a strong statement. Okay. Sorry for the distraction. Next, so we'll talk about that next meeting, as in.
Now, Ryan had, we, did, you met with Muni Liv? I almost said something.
Muni Live.
I couldn't make it.
Muni Collab, Chair, yes.
Muni guy.
So I'm gonna sort of sidestep this, and just state that at the last meeting, there was some information shared involving village officials that I wanna correct and retract, that what was expressed last meeting was not correct, that based on an email chain and just a flurry of emails, that there was some misinformation, some miscommunication, and that the village official mentioned in no way applied any kind of pressure, or was leaning in either direction concerning the software company and things like that. So, that said, this past Wednesday, the 1st, I was present for a Zoom meeting where a quick demonstration of the municipal software known as Muni Collab was presented. Also tuned, tuning in, with a little rough patch, was Planning Board member Mike Gee, who listened on and watched. I did take notes, and I will have to say, it is, it is a very well-done municipal software. I will say that it definitely has its perks. It's a very fluid software system. It has many advancements than systems that I saw in the past, and I've witnessed in the past. The example that they used for the demonstration was the city of Poughkeepsie, who has signed on with this company and software. So essentially, this software would provide not only access for the office, where it would definitely cut down on the amount of paper that comes through, but it would also provide access to you all as a board. And then the additional, the third benefit to this, it would provide access for village residents to monitor a proposed project at their computer. They would not have to email me, I would not have to send any PDFs, I wouldn't have to, you know, really do a full request, since most of this information is public when it's submitted for formal review.
Do you think this would help you, Miranda, Justin?
It would help, however, I don't think it's right for this time. I would say that the volume that the city of Poughkeepsie is very much more beyond the volume that we have here.
That's what I was about to say.
Here in the village of Ryan Ryback. I can foresee in the future, down the road, this being a software that could have a future with the village of Ryan Ryback. However, for right now, I think there's just too many bells and whistles for our office to really take advantage of this software. The other thing that would sort of have to be explored is, the way they presented it was to pay for this software on a yearly basis, it's the equivalent of $1 per resident. So, I believe in the village, we're.
Twenty-six hundred people.
At twenty-six hundred, so give or take that, maybe that's plus or minus. You're probably looking at twenty-six hundred a year for this software.
I think what you're doing with pulling together the applications and putting it into, you know, Google Drive and letting us share and bring the documentation, which is something we've done just this past year, is really making it much simpler for us to see, for us to show to the audience that's here. They can all see all the pictures out of the big TV, and I think that's working quite well for us now.
Yes, I applauded them on their creation, I applauded them on their demonstration. I just felt that, you know, it's a bigger animal than what we're really up for.
Because I saw some of their examples, and they were massive. It's like the 80, they can use it for the 80 affordable housing units. It's really larger projects.
Yes, that, yes, I mean, yes, the examples that they've shared that the city of Poughkeepsie is undertaking, we're talking, I mean, one was like for, like, 200 units of housing, and pretty much for the developer, it just lays out A to Z, what they have to submit, you know, the zoning, and things, and things like that, there's actually in there, where they are automatically have to do a zoning review to see if what they're proposing meets the zoning for that municipality. Municipal, what's that?
Questions?
Thank you. So, in one way, that is a help, because it takes us, takes us in the office out of the picture when we have folks call, and they say, I live at this street, but I don't know what district I'm in, what do I gotta do? So usually, we have to walk them through, either going to ECO 360 for the residential district, or the historic district, or the village center business district. That would, that would take that out of the equation. They would be automatically told what district they're in, and what zoning they have to meet. But I would definitely say it's, it's not for us right now. Down the road, sure, but not for us right now. So, I'm happy to work with David to draft a letter, basically saying, you know, thank you for taking the time, thinking about us. However, you know, we just, we just can't utilize this system and this software right now.
Good, thank you.
Okay. So that's taken care of. So, I have further business, you're welcome, Jeff. Further business, we have a referral from the building inspector, I'm sorry, I don't have more. But, so, at 23 South Street, they want to demolish the existing porch that I guess goes pretty much on all three sides of the house, and they want to put back with the same design. However, they wanna change the decking from the current wood decking to the composite decking. And I apologize if this didn't make it into the Google Drive link, this was sort of in the last two days. So I can pass this down for you guys to share and take a look at.
That's the, that's the used Waldeman house?
I would say yes, if that, yes, yes it is.
Is this the house that we approved something?
No.
That's the one next door?
That's next door.
But these guys came. This was the one with the skylights and the attic?
Yeah, they did come.
Was it? Oh, I don't.
I remember Adele were here like six months ago.
This was like, this was the one, and then they were up in the attic.
That's right, and they were, the skylights on this side, and the U in that side. And in the rear of the house, there's what amounts to an ADU, and they were gonna basically remove that. It was quite a lot of interior renovation.
Well, the prior owner had a disability, so I think a lot of these porches and ramps and ADU were all sort of related to that, that they're talking about taking on.
A hundred and one million dollar question is, does the board feel that this proposed work should come before you guys for site, for site plan review?
It's a lot of work on the front of the building.
Didn't they, when they came to us the last time, if I recall, they were also talking about changing the flooring and the porch.
Of the porches, yeah.
The stairs, so it was quite a bit of work.
They talked about relocating the entry in that indented portion of the house, which would front on the porch they're talking about today. It doesn't look like this, I could do that.
I was there, just there, some of the storage, there's a lot of outside stuff.
I think to be safe, we probably shouldn't have, if they're messing with the front porch.
I will let the architect know, and you'll see them on 20th to 21st.
Thanks, Justin, I like these DeCaro's things.
And then one last thing, Chair. This is for all the membership, and I guess anyone listening in the audience or at home. I think this will be out before this happens. New York State Department of State will be holding on Thursday, May 30th, from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. A light supper will be served at 6:00 p.m. out at the Farm and Home Center in Millbrook. Session 1 will be on Seeger Basics, and Session 2, Skills That Make Great Board Members. And please don't take that as a shot at any of you, saying that you guys are not great board members.
Right, a couple of years ago, we had a couple of, bringing the mountain to Mohammed, as they say. We worked with Michael Tremble, we could work with Melanie now, and have someone come with an audience of 20 or 30 people, village and town officials, village and town planning board members, zoning board members, to give a class that was directed towards Ryan Beck in total. And we stopped doing that when COVID hit.
I can certainly reach out to the Chair over at the Town of Ryan Beck Planning Board. I can tell you that down in Poughkeepsie, at Dutchess County Planning and Develop, I know some things have changed, there's been some staff change. So I don't know if the same enthusiasm to hold those types of seminars, workshops, and events still exists where those professionals come to the municipality.
Right.
But certainly, we can obviously ask.
Because that was great to get everyone to try to go somewhere, or, you know.
They seem to like the Farm and Home Center a whole lot.
They do, but it's.
Well, it's centrally located, it's really not that far from here.
It's not, and I wanna thank Ryan for sending out the announcement on those courses. Because I went to the one last week, that was in the email you sent out, on lighting.
Sure.
And it was outstanding. It was.
Oh, they have good people.
It was outstanding, and there must have been 50 people there from various planning boards. It was in the Farms, you know, whatever that center is. Really well done, and it's just amazing how much I learned about lighting. I can't look at lights the same way anymore. I can't go down the street without saying, that's bad lighting, or that's good lighting. You're really, and I'm registered for the thirtieth.
I think that's going to be so fast.
I'll be going to that one, too. I recommend it. They're really good.
And another, it also adds to your credit hours. Because as, as you recall, as Planning Board members, the state requires you guys to have a certain amount of continuing education and training hours, credited hours throughout the year.
I think Albany Planning sometimes has Zoom meetings that you can attend as well. But it would be great. So you don't think that they would have this floating?
I, I don't want to paint it in a negative brush, Chair. I can certainly reach out and see if there is willingness from the town and see if we can send a combined letter down to Dutchess County Planning to see if, see if we can make some.
Because we attended several programs at Town Hall, and there were board members from both the village and the town, zoning and planning board members in the village and the town. We had like twenty or thirty people. And it was right here, and everybody attended the class. But they had these teachers going around from Dutchess Planning. He said he was going to Millbrook next, was going to Dover Plains next, you know. He was giving talks to get all the people there, and it was very helpful.
Pace Law also sends their folks out to do seminars a lot.
We'll have to get on their email.
Yeah. I'll just, Ken, Ken was thinking about it. He just talked to Ken about this.
There was the, I was there, too. I mean, it was, it was good that we had, and we could share common things about, specific to Ryenbeck between the town and the village. The town was more concerned about town issues, like bigger things. We don't have this kind of developments that they do. But it was very helpful, rolling it together, and it was good for us that all of Ryenbeck was in one room talking and sharing stuff. If we could do that again at least once a year. Anything else?
Just two quick things. One is, Ryan, maybe you can just coach the Westerland folks on what to bring to the meeting when they come to talk about the elevation? Because I think, you know, they do nice stuff, and if they're gonna propose something thoughtful, it's gonna take a lot for us to understand it. And, you know, the sign thing is, we're okay with what we saw tonight, but I think they're gonna need a little more detail on that. It just seemed like there might have been a little miss in terms of what to bring to the meeting. So maybe you can also, in addition to sharing what's allowed, coach them a little bit on bringing some elevations and some more specific plans.
And that guy was the last minute son.
I think it was.
Didn't even know what the project was.
Yes, I received a phone call today from the, from the owner, Andrea Westerland, and said that she would be unable to make it, but she'd be sending her segment command, so that, that was him.
Yeah, but whoever comes, just more materials for us to see and understand in advance.
So a question, and probably this might have been better suited when they, when we were on the topic, if they choose not to improve the siding?
That's what I was worried about, them walking away today without an approval. That they might just drop the whole thing.
I doubt it.
I hope not.
Yeah.
It looks pretty shabby.
If they're making a $25,000 investment on the interior of the building, that's a pretty big investment for what retailers typically do in the village. And I would imagine they'd want the outside to look the part.
Okay.
I think this is part of a bigger plan, I think, to establish their brand.
Now, if, if they propose better, well, we talked about this. Mike, you, you really want to see it?
They're coming either way, we said.
They're coming on the twenty-first. Someone's coming.
And then my second annoying question is just meeting minutes. I think we're, we're like six or seven meeting minutes, six or seven meetings behind now.
I'm gonna defer that to Ken.
Okay.
So please email Ken.
Okay.
I think Jeff had.
I believe it at that. Two things that I know.
When we spoke last week, I had a status, and we were, something like eleven of the prior meeting minutes that we did approve weren't up there. Since then, I see you put up, I think, nine of them. I think there's only two that I noticed that didn't go. The most recent one, I had sent out an email. I'll send it again.
January sixteenth?
Yeah, yeah, the last, yeah, the January sixteenth one was up there, and the, going back to the twenty.
I'll show you my list. I, I had that one checked, checked off.
Okay, all right. I'll take a look at it again, but yeah, so now we're one, two, three, four, five. This, this will be the sixth.
Sixth, okay.
Yeah, so we have five meetings now without minutes.
No, Jeff, I appreciate you tracking this and coming up with the spreadsheet so we could understand.
The longer we go without it, the harder it is to kind of review and remember.
Remembering what you have.
Or approving. Anyway.
We need minutes.
A lot of things that I had. One, I wanted to thank the village for doing all the sidewalks out front. They look great. And I'm looking forward to crosswalks there once the sidewalks are done.
You have to pave the streets first.
Yeah, we have to pave Center Street first, but yeah.
Yeah. Secondly, I noticed on my walks that the hospital had cut down like four gigantic evergreen trees.
Yes.
That helped to screen the brick building that's on the corner and the parking.
They were, they were just about dead. That's, and when we were originally planning that, I spent a morning there with Meg Crawford, and everything, you know, these are gonna be here, 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 and she goes through all this construction. You wait and see. That, that one, that'll be dead, and that's what's happened.
I didn't see it. They didn't look that unhealthy to me, but it just seems to me, if they do something like that, we should replace the trees.
It's in the, the site plan.
Yes.
They agreed to maintain the property. If a tree came down, a new tree would go, and that was part of the site plan. But I signed that they would do that.
I don't know.
So now that it's New Vance or Northwell, I picked your poison. It's unclear who we, who the office contacts.
Denise George.
But Denise George is still there.
She's still at the hospital.
So, okay.
Just a reminder of her site plan.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
It just seems like there should be some screening.
Because I have different names that I reached out to, and I have no response back.
Just ask her who you need to talk to now.
Okay.
And the other thing I wanted to just mention, and I'm not sure that we can do anything about it, but the Amsterdam has put these incredibly large metal planters out in front. And I want everybody to take a look at them, see what you think.
Those horse troughs?
Yes. That's what they look like, you know, agricultural oval.
They're in front of CVS as well.
Yeah.
Something happened to that. That was a nice little sitting area.
But this is like right on the sidewalk, right in front of a historic building. The CVS, the CVS.
But about two years ago, I think this is the second season with them at least out there. Those horse troughs, you talked about.
They've been out since COVID.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe the third season.
And they also, they, when it was originally approved, you had a handicap ramp that went up the alley on the north edge of the building and then went to the end of the porch. And then when they did the outdoor dining thing, they got rid of, they didn't get rid of it. It's still there. But they put a temporary ramp on the front steps, you know, aluminum temporary ramp. And then they put seating in the porch area, because it would be blocked. Now I saw that they took the temporary ramp away, but, you know, I just, I think we ought to sort of keep an eye on that place.
Check if you dropped a lot.
Sorry?
I don't think the horse troughs should go in myself.
That's something I'll need later. Thank you.
I can send Justin over there to check things out. For direction, the code, the horse troughs, could that be considered landscaping for flowers? Or is that, or what are we talking?
Is it furniture or landscaping?
It's accessory structure.
It's a structure.
Pull the, pull the final approved site plan that we approved, what he could do on that front porch.
That makes sense. The troughs are not on the front porch. They're, they're in, they're on rock, which I'm guessing was once grass. The grass was ripped up and rock was put down.
Yeah.
And now the troughs, I believe they have flowers in them when the flowers are planted.
Yeah, but really not consistent with the historic district.
That's a very important story.
So I don't know if we have any control over landscaping features, but those, to me, are more like accessory structures than landscaping.
Does anybody remember, did he have a landscape plan that?
It's on the, it's on the final plan, and it says a couple of tables out there. Now COVID, by the way, changed that, because now we're encouraging the outdoor dining, but this might have fallen between the cracks. Look at the, pull the original plan and show it to Justin, then he'll go out and look at it. And then he can make some comments back to us. But there was a couple of tables out there, and that was it.
I don't think the tables were out there in the original site plan.
I don't, I thought, might have a couple. I don't know. You gotta pull the original site plan. But nothing like what's out there now was on the plan, but then the rules changed.
Yeah, we sort of didn't enforce things like that during the COVID. We, we forgave a lot. But maybe now we ought to think about getting things back to actual landscaping rather than.
In 2020 and in 2021, they had tables in that front area outside of the porch. But that, those plans moved in after that.
Yeah, but it is a huge space. It is a lot of space inside, a huge patio in the back.
Well, that's why he stopped doing it in the front, because he didn't want to have to go to you for a site plan, so.
I don't know if he's using the back anymore.
He is.
He pulled his tent?
I don't know if he took it down, but.
Tent's gone. I've been back there. Ever, ever since Elijah started, tent's, tent's gone. Couldn't miss that tent.
Oh, well, it is, I know that he's planning on using it.
I guess not, not with a rain.
Yeah, the building's been, he's been having all sorts of problems with the construction.
I'm sure. He lost his parking.
Well, that was we lost.
Well, that's greenout. That's the one right next to it. We never heard anything from them.
He didn't complain. I just figured it was part of the process, but.
He got, he got the sixteen paid parking spots for free because of the, what happened with the whole thing there. So he should be happy about that, and that, but he's not. Anything else?
Magic words.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Do you have a second? Who's in favor? See you on the twenty-first.
By the way, while you guys were all out walking around, Frontier has started pulling down double telephone posts.